Do you see if we, if everybody would prefer moving that to a week when we have all our members? I just want to take a poll. And if we have a majority, we'll move it to the next meeting when Justin can be here.
I would prefer that.
As well.
As well.
Okay, so we're gonna move that to the next meeting. What's the next meeting?
The 17th.
Monday.
This month? Okay.
I'll double check, but I believe it's the 17th.
I'm like, we're in June, right? I gotta look it up.
Is that on a Monday, though?
Yes.
It's Monday. We're back on the Mondays.
Yay, you're right.
It's so confusing when it's on a Wednesday. I feel like...
I like Mondays way better than Wednesdays.
Yep, it's the only thing I have, so that's good. 19th, it looks like I have two things about that. Oh, that's a holiday anyways. We couldn't do it to 19th. Alright, so we're gonna move that to the 17th. Great. So, the second item is the Unique Souls Canon Training. All we had to do was sign the certificate if everybody is in agreement with the... Did we already sign it? We signed it last time?
No, we just approved it and I had to draft it, so...
I can remember if we actually signed the paper, just in case, because sometimes we do that.
I can send you the whole thing, or just the signature page.
Do we need a special signature as rent them?
No, regular pen is good.
I think rent them is fine.
Joe?
Yes?
On this here...
It's always led to my own pink.
We have a special permit, you need four people.
Right.
We already voted on it.
We prob...
But he's not...
Yeah, but he watched it.
Let me, yeah, he, uh... We probably oughta vote on signing the conditions, just to make it formal. Uh, but to answer Stan's question, because Justin wasn't here, um, I wasn't... Tom wasn't here for the meeting.
Do we all?
But Justin isn't here for...
A signature.
Oh!
A signature. You know, I've got two.
Oh, okay.
Uh, so Tom watched the, uh, that portion of the meeting, um, today, and is able to participate, so we've got our four.
Okay.
So I'll take a motion to approve the certificate of action for the special permit to conduct on training.
Second half.
Alright.
But...
No, I need a motion.
I thought you said, yeah.
So move.
Okay. I have a motion and a second.
I'm listening.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I guess I'll take my own, I guess I'll make... That was good. Alright, well, Five Berries, we don't have any updates or anything, 'cause...
Not, not, um, formally, just to, to give you a little bit of update, the, uh...
Sorry.
The building inspector, um, sent me a, an email list that talked about Madison requesting a, uh, a final electrical inspection. The electrical inspection and permit that was given before was to allow power to be, um, sent to the site for purposes of testing batteries and running the fire suppression system in case something happened. So, there, they were, uh, they were approved for that, but they don't have a final approval for the entire facility. The inspector is going to visit that on the 13th of March, of March, I'm wrong, June, uh, and, um, assumedly approve it from an electrical standpoint. The building inspector still wants the board of, the planning board to sign off before he signs off. Um, I, I think, you know, you're getting to the point where, um, a decision's gonna be made. I did talk to Jack Hackman about the idea of dividing up revenue in some fashion such that it's protection. Uh, he was not happy about that idea. However, he did suggest that to be willing to put up some type of a bond. And I'm not sure what we're bonding against. Um, certainly, if there's a bond to finish site work, the town doesn't want to be in a position to go in there and build detention basins or whatever else. Uh, I'm hoping to talk to Brian and have a joint call with, with Hackman to see if there's some mechanism that, first of all, satisfies claims that have been made or could be made by abutters. And I'm not gonna get into, to that aspect of it, but want to make sure that these folks have been taken care of. And secondly, some, um, uh, mechanism other than relying on good weather, that if there is a problem, there's a way to ensure that it's gonna be taken care of. Speaking personally, uh, my observation of what's transpired over the last few months, Madison has done whatever they felt needed to be done, in just my estimation. Uh, Jack Hackman continues to say to me each time we talk, "We're not going anywhere." And in fairness to them, I think anything that has been asked of them has been done from the planning board's perspective. There may be, you know, it's, it's not my ox that's been gored in terms of abutters and how they've been dealt with. I, I don't know. That's, that's something that, you know, we need to get assurances that, uh, these folks are, uh, are being taken care of. But my point in rambling on about this is, at some point in time, we're gonna hit, you know, the crunch period where, um, either the building inspector doesn't issue a permit and then, uh, they can appeal to the ZBA, uh, and the ZBA takes it up. I just don't wanna go there, I wanna find a way to fix this thing in terms of...
Mm-hmm.
So, but that's, that's all the update I can provide at the moment.
Yeah, 'cause we did talk about it at the last meeting, about doing something like that with funds. But if they're gonna ask for it, they need to come here and ask for it too. They, they need to be here, not just send some random representative or send their poor engineer. She's not gonna be responsible for that.
I, I don't think there was any expectation tonight that any type of decision was gonna be made.
Right, yeah, tonight, right.
I think we're the beneficiary of good weather, um, so nothing has happened. Maybe this week, uh, you know, something will happen and nothing happens in terms of rain, but no adverse impact.
Um, Paul, this is the lady from Lowiki South Street. Um, which I haven't been able to be here for the past couple of meetings, but I understood that there was supposed to be a new plan that they would have to control the water. Is that gonna finalize?
Yeah, they did do a new plan, and they've put, they've put mostly everything in, I think, that they've...
Yeah.
The grass is growing, too.
There's still, still work to be done on the detention basins, but, and that's ongoing.
And then we have the issue with the temporary basin, we don't know what's going on with that either. I mean, I think, I'm not sure how everyone else feels, but I know that there's a preference for leaving it there until it actually rains and then we don't see water in it. Like, if it was an inch of rain, there should only be an inch of water. If it was an inch of rain, there's three inches of water, then it's still being used, so I, I know I'm, I want... I'm hoping that the Y will come to some kind of agreement, 'cause I don't understand why that's such an issue, 'cause it's really kind of out of the way. And they're not doing anything of it, they have nothing out there. It's not affecting their business, so I'm curious about that. I'd like them to come back and, if they can't come to an agreement with them, I'd like them to come back and explain why.
Are there any deadlines for any of those things that need to be done? I'm sure Russ, that those, kind of the situation is under control. There's another big storm?
I'm, I'm not sure exactly...
She needs to come up to the speaker.
Not sure, I heard...
No, she wanted to know if there were deadlines, if they had deadlines.
Well, the deadline, as a practical matter, they wanna soon turn the system on and start generating revenue. They're not gonna be allowed to turn that on without a, a certificate of occupancy from the building inspector. And the building inspector isn't going to issue that without this board, planning board, being satisfied that everything is working. Um, so, you know, the good news, when it doesn't rain, no one has any issues, but the bad side of that, we don't know if the system is working. Uh, so, absent some significant rainstorm, there's gonna have to be some mechanism in place. Money or, or a temporary, Chris had mentioned last time around, a temporary occupancy permit that dies in 60 days, whatever, without it being renewed, such that if it rains in that 60 days, we know whether it works or not. Uh, again, those are just ideas that are, that are out there. Um, as I said, I hope to have a conversation with the town administrator and, and Madison to see what can we come up with as a, you know, a win-win. Let them do what ultimately they wanted to do, and that is generate power, but ensure that there's not gonna be any further problems with drainage off-site, so.
Go ahead.
Hi. Just real quick, the previous meeting is posted online on YouTube, and they do a good job of explaining the full details of the improvements that they're trying to make to the site. Um, so, it might be worth going back and watching that.
I think I was unaware it was on YouTube.
Yep.
Thank you.
Chris?
Yeah, I'm, basically, I, we're not gonna know, I mean, the bond, I, I, has to be in place at some point, I think. And I don't know how much that would be, but we're not gonna be, we're not gonna know the failure rate until the ground freezes, truly. You know? I mean, because, you know, when, when the ground becomes impenetrable and the grass is not quote-unquote "doing the job" that it needs to be doing and slowing everything down, I don't think we're gonna know. And, I mean, you can give them the ability to generate power, but you gotta be able to shut it down if it doesn't work, do you know what I'm saying? Or at least come up with some financial retribution for these people, because you can't just, you know, hopes and stuff.
Right.
You know, so financially, I get it. I want them to get going, um, but at the same time, they have to be protected, and that's, we're not gonna know that until the ground freezes.
I mean, I, when they mentioned about the temporary occupancy, I mean, that's something we could look at. I don't know, like, maybe Brian can find out if it's something we can do. You know, town council, and then just say like...
I think town council's gonna have to...
Right, like, okay, we, we want, right now, we want, say, however many months, like, three months, six months, whatever, 'cause then it'll bring us into the colder season. And then we can say, okay, we're gonna give you another six months, you know, like, keep doing it every four to six months until we make it a whole year and we see what happens. 'Cause it could, it could just, make sure we could be sitting here being like, "This is great," or it was like, "It was a complete disaster." We have no idea.
Yeah, I mean, I obviously don't work for Madison. I can only assume that they have financing, and that financing is conditioned on a final occupancy. I mean, just like a house.
Right.
No one's gonna lend you money on a house that you potentially can't live in. So, there's probably some similar mechanism with their financing arrangement. So, we have to be a little careful that we can't stretch them out with a temporary occupancy permit for too long, because they're not gonna get ultimately their financing. So, I think there's gonna have to be some discussion back and forth in terms of...
I don't think a bank would wanna back a system that wasn't working.
Right.
Well, that, that too. Well, the system, the system is, you know, from a...
Production standpoint.
... operational and production standpoint, I'm, I'm sure works. Uh, and whether the bank wants to be too worried about drainage, uh, that's...
They should be.
Well, um, if they don't have a final occupancy permit, they will be. If they have a...
I'm just, I just feel like it's, it's the worst time of year. It's like, it's the driest time of year. So, it's like, if we even gave them three months, it's probably not gonna even matter.
But they're doing what they said they're doing.
Right, they are.
But it's, it's a waiting game at this point.
But is it working? And I understand that, you know, if they're gonna make promises that if it doesn't work, they're gonna come right back and fix it, then...
That's the point.
That's the thing. Like, I mean, what's our recourse if they don't? Like, can we shut them off? Can we fine them? Can we, you know, have money put aside that we're like, "Okay," you know? Mike?
Hey, guys.
Hi.
I'm Mike Walsh. I just, I think the mechanism's a great thing, but a couple of things. Now, I would think is the best time, it's in their best interest to come up with the most flexible mechanism to help themselves, I would think.
Mm-hmm.
Secondly, will there be another meeting where we're gonna be able to hear? 'Cause I would imagine you'll be interacting with them to see exactly what this mechanism is, because I, I agree with them, I don't think until winter comes, you're not gonna know anything. It's gonna be great for the next two and a half months, I would imagine, that we'll probably be next to know for problems, but...
We don't know if it's really fixed.
Right, we don't know when the mechanism is. You know, their financing, all that stuff's contingent on getting the occupancy and the rest of it, but ultimately, that mechanism should be in place, and they should be pretty damn willing to do whatever they need to, to get right now, to get that in place, and to put up either the bonding or whatever you guys come up with. 'Cause otherwise, they're gonna get that thing and I can just see it's gonna be a head.
'Cause we did mention to him last meeting, and he said, "Oh, I'm gonna look into it." Adam said he'll bring it, like, this...
Oh, he did, and, and when I talked with Jack, uh...
Not so much.
Not so much. And again, I, I don't know what their cash flow requirements are, but, you know, they, they frankly didn't want any interference with their revenue stream, because I'm sure that's pledged to their mortgagee.
Of course.
Um, but, we've gotta find some other mechanism. The problem of a bond, first of all, you're dealing with an insurance company, and to deal with that insurance company, you need an attorney, and then even if you get money, we don't have permission to go in there and repair, nor do we have the expertise, or do we wanna take the, the resulting responsibility that, geez, well, you know, "We dug out the retention basin, now it's too deep," whatever it is.
Right.
Personally, I'm not real fond of bonds, but there's gotta be some tool that can be used. Uh, I, I'm not being pessimistic, I'm just assuming there's something that we can do that covers all these bases.
Somewhere between us not having any ability to shut them down and us having an ability to protect them. Somewhere between that has to happen.
I mean, it should be, honestly, it should be the all-American thing. Let them tie up cash right after 12 months, no problem. They'll get their cash back, put it into an interest-bearing account. None of this is about affecting their income or anything else. It's about protecting everyone else, right? It's okay, let them put up the cash. They can do that. I'm sure they've got plenty of it. They may not want to, but the bottom line is, let them put it up and then...
Is his name Mike?
Yeah.
Mike, every single site is an LLC individually.
Yeah.
They can cut them off, they can cut a finger off.
Well, they, I'm sure they can cut them off, but the bottom line is, if the cash is tied up effectively, they can cut it off all they want. If they tie up $500,000 or $1 million cash, you know what the bottom line is, is they're gonna be left...
Well, the bank is gonna come, come a-knocking if it doesn't work, that's for sure.
I mean, I'm sure, and I, I'm not saying there's anything easy, but you know what? If they have, stay a little skin in the game and normal, you're gonna have more of a headache than if they don't. That's my thoughts.
Do, how do we go about exploring and figuring out what mechanism we'll ultimately choose to use in this situation?
Well, my, my, again, my thought is to, in concert with, with Brian, um, talk to them, and if we need to get town council involved as well. I don't, you, I don't know what their financial situation is, not that I'm here to protect their financial situation, but, and I'm, I'm not suggesting it's getting blood out of a rock. I'm sure they have financial obligations to some mortgagee or mortgager, and, um, I, there's a revenue stream that that bank or financing agency is looking toward, uh, so we, we've gotta be careful that we can't take so much that now they can't meet their financial obligations. But by the same token, you know, you've got obligations as a planning board to these people, um, so we've gotta find a way to balance that. I, I don't know what that is. And, um, you know, my first thought was not well-received by them. Just leave it that he's said, you know, "We're willing to do a bond." Problem, again, mechanically with the bond, if the system doesn't work, then what?
Right, then we're stuck fixing it with that money.
Yeah.
It can't be the first time that something like this has happened.
It's called the precedence, that's what I was saying. Legally, that's what you have to look at.
I'm curious if there's other towns who have had similar instances that have maybe some recommendation of their experience that could apply here, or... Um, and I understand what you're saying, Chris, as far as precedence is concerned, that, that implies some sort of, you know, legal term where this may not necessarily be fully like a, you know, court-legal type thing, but more of an agreement between a town and a, and a business, which maybe, maybe that is also...
Well, let's just say, the reason why I say precedent, is sometimes these things don't end well. And that's where precedents are set.
So, if somebody, like, in your, in the, in the case of what you're saying, then it's, if somebody were, um, you know, if a town were to sue and win...
Or vice versa.
Then, then you would have a precedent. Or vice versa, or sue and lose, then you see that there is...
That's why, that's why lawyers do their job. They, they look to see what precedents are, and they figure the risk of it.
So then, town council and the combination of him and Brian?
Yeah, I, I mean, I'd love to, um, you know, have a conversation with Madison, and um, they know what our situation is. I don't know what their situation is. And have them suggest, "Here's what we can do," that, you know, it protects you, protects, more importantly, the abutters, um, and allows us to go on about our business as we had originally planned. Uh, put the ball in their court. If that doesn't work, then town council and/or Brian may have other thoughts, but, uh, you know, planning boards typically take bonds on subdivisions for road improvements, uh, so that if the road's not done, the town can...
And we have the means to do that.
A, you have the, both the expertise and the means to do it. Um, you have the ability to go on that limited part of the project, you're not going in people's yards, you're going into what's going to be a public way, but we can't go in there with bulldozers roaring and fix what we think needs fixing.
Right.
So, a bond is, unless someone can educate me as to how it would be beneficial in this case, um, I'm not sure how useful that is, but...
Joe, how much are we losing every year on this now?
In terms of, you know, I, to be candid, I've never read the pilot agreement, so I, I don't know.
I think we're losing $150,000 a year, too.
Yeah.
That deal, that deal up there is mincemeat compared to what the Lowiki's did. That deal is not nearly as good as the deal we struck with the Lowiki's down off High Street. The numbers, not even close to them. But that I found amazed, I was amazed at that.
Yeah, so, so in reality, until they get this done, we're losing tax value, too.
It's not as great of a deal as you think, but yep.
Yeah, but no, we're losing $100,000, $150,000 a year. Nobody even realizes that.
Well, I think we do realize that, but we have to worry about them. Like, I'm not gonna be like, "We got $150,000, sorry, you have to redo your basement on your own cash." That's not even gonna cover the cost of what happened to them.
It's not.
So I don't feel, you know, I don't, I feel like the town really needs to take care of our residents first, and it's like, if this makes us lose $150,000, as you say, we're gonna gain it by helping them. Like, I don't know. Patty?
Hi, Patty Walsh. My parents live at 411 South Street. Um, going back to design stuff, I think we talked, or Madison had talked about making that basin, 1A, the one at the bottom of the hill, larger. I know at one point... They did widen it, but they did not dig it deeper. And I think, um, Adam had said something, they needed your approval to dig it deeper. And I think he was able to get that at the last meeting.
We've already given them approval for all that, so they just keep asking.
Have they dug it deeper?
I don't know if they have or not. I haven't been up there.
They were waiting for to get the approval to dig it deeper. They did make it wider, but it's not gonna help, because the width is still too high to carry the water. But at the la, last week, the meeting, they were supposed to dig it deeper, once they got the approval that they could do that.
Right.
I think that, at the last meeting, they talked about...
Done any other work?
Digging it.
I, I don't know if the, um, at the last meeting, you approved, um, Jeff Walter, someone from his office, to be present when any of that work is done.
Yeah.
And I haven't heard that they've gone out there, but that doesn't mean anything.
Yeah, we need to follow, but Jeff, that's where we did.
'Cause that was a while ago that we talked about making the basin bigger.
Yeah, 'cause we did, we said that Jeff would be there.
And we said they built the temporary basin. So, they wanna take down the temporary basin, but they still haven't corrected the original basin.
Right.
So I just wondered if that was done, that was supposed to be done. I didn't...
Yeah, we didn't hear back from Jeff, so we'll have to follow up with him and see if they've called him in to do work, 'cause we did say that. Mike?
Hey, do you think, uh, do you guys have any idea, I know you're gonna talk to Nax Grid and so on, is when they may have some idea about this mechanism? Are we gonna have any input on it? Will we hear anything? Or does anyone have any? And they must be getting close, so I would imagine they should be pretty ramped up to deal with this one way or another, I think, I don't know, Mike.
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna, one way or another, either they're gonna come to the meeting and talk about it, or they're gonna come to a meeting with, you know, town council, Brian and Joe, and hash things out, but they're still gonna have to present at the meeting for us to decide, so it will definitely be out.
Do you have any idea when we hope that might happen by, or is this gonna be a...
I don't think Jeff and those guys have gone on site to see the work. Jeff, like we said just a second ago, Jeff was, came up in front of us, he says, "I wanna be there when their engineers and their construction crews there, 'cause I wanna see what they're thinking, what they're doing."
Right.
And, and we haven't re, heard back from Jeff on that.
So he could've gone, his head didn't have time, but we just, we need to follow up with Jeff and see if he's gone up there, if they have a date when they're gonna be up there, at least, or something.
Obviously, they're, they're not too worried about it, because they'd be sitting in front of us if they were, you know, so...
I mean, I guess it's just, I'm sure they'll get excited when it's time to get their, their switch turned on, but...
Right.
So, I mean, it's probably is a month or two still away, then? I mean...
There's a lot to do with Jeff.
I have no idea what their schedule is.
I mean, just...
And whether or not we can get a mechanism to protect you guys.
Right.
So those two things together.
But they still have to finish the work, regardless if we work the other stuff out, they still have to finish all the work.
So we're just waiting, meeting to meeting, to see when they show up?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, well, we're gonna, if they're not gonna, I mean, I, we knew they weren't gonna be here tonight, I think. I didn't expect them here tonight. 'Cause I thought we said at the last meeting, they probably wouldn't be here tonight, 'cause they still had work to do, but, yeah, we leave it on the agenda so it can be discussed.
At least give some type of an update, whether it's in person, or by email, or something, to just let us know in the last two weeks, "Have you done anything?" Or you just, or they just sitting there, twiddling their thumbs?
I understand, I understand that, but it's like, it's only been two weeks, so I don't know, like, what their schedule is. That's why we've been waiting for Jeff.
In May, so it, and I think it was before that, that we talked about retention laws.
Yeah, 'cause, well, they were here last week talking about, and that's when we said that Jeff was gonna go. The last meeting, in May, the last one.
So maybe they'll be there next meeting?
Hope so. Or at least have something.
Wish we could update you, see if...
I mean, we feel the same way, it's frustrating, 'cause we don't hear. Yeah, we feel the same way, it's frustrating, 'cause we don't hear either, and it's like, "So, what's going on? Like, are they doing anything?" But I wanna know, this weekend, it's supposed to rain a lot, so let me know if it, if there's any problems, 'cause I'd like to know.
Is the heavy rain supposed to be tomorrow morning?
I thought tomorrow's supposed to be bad, and it's supposed to rain like all weekend.
Like, the torrential stuff's tomorrow morning, ain't it?
Yeah.
I, yeah, I don't foresee a problem, you know, with all the grass that's growing there. I really don't.
I hope not.
I, I just, my, my, well, my opinion is, when you see the problem, is when the ground freezes.
They brought up truckloads of those bales. I saw two trailer loads going up there for all their flow diffusers.
The past two weeks?
Yep. Yep, and they had a Bobcat up there, and they had trucks, and they had a bunch of guys up there, putting in those flow diffusers.
Was Jeff there?
No, not for the detention, these are the wattles that they're supposed to build up.
Putting.
The lineup.
The flow interrupters?
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the stop.
I was thinking on the perimeter when you said bales.
Yeah.
They're gonna start with those bales, and then they're gonna.
Like, one of the problems, like, inside their fence has all the grass, has all the wattles, has everything else. But the water that was coming to fill up that temporary basin was not coming from inside the fence. So if they're doing all the work inside the fence, that's great, but the water that filled up that temporary retention pond is the problem that's flooding my parents.
So is the one coming from the Y?
It's from the very top.
Coming from the Y land.
Not coming from the Y, cause the panels are above the Y. It's coming off of the, inside of the fence, it's coming outside of the fence, running down that little strip of woods. And that little strip of woods is what's.
Right, but that part was supposed to be fixed, cause all the work they're doing is supposed to make it so that that doesn't happen.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Cause grass can grow all day long, it's still not gonna help my dad.
Well, we'll have to see, cause they're saying it will, so I don't know, I mean. We have to go, the engineers are saying it will, so I'm hoping it does, but if it doesn't, then they're gonna have to revisit it again and fix it.
Now, the other thing, don't they still need state approval? I thought at one meeting there was.
Do they need state?
I don't know, I've never heard that.
I thought way back that, no matter what you guys did, they still had to get some approval from the state. That just could be me.
I have no idea.
Maybe from a connection standpoint, um, which, I, I don't know, I've, I've never. I've never crossed that topic as part of this. Uh, it's always been local, in terms of planning board, of course, the electrical permit and, and building inspector's permit.
We're getting a half an inch of rain. It's not gonna make any difference. Grass will soak that way though.
I can't hear this thing.
Well, we're getting a half inch of rain and the grass.
No, I, I, I didn't think it was gonna rain that much, the grass is gonna absorb it, yeah.
Alright, so I guess we'll try to get a update for the next meeting, see what's been done. Alright, so next we have Plainville master plan, our favorite subject. I have.
I know there's a certain level of dissatisfaction, um, and I'm not looking to, um, either defend or criticize the master plan, I'm just trying to get a, a sense of how you, what I can do to, to get you to where you're, um, what do I want to say? I mean, the per- the, the process has gone to this point, you saw the, uh, the email that was, uh, sent out by, uh, Grant King, I think is his name. Saying that, that they distribute the plan on the twenty ninth of May, which is what we got. But how does it get to the public? What's the role of the planning board? What's the role you wanna take? Because certainly there was nothing really in there, uh, in, in that email that suggested that the planning board is now gonna take it and do whatever. I did have a conversation with Chris Yarworth, one of the, and I forgot the funding agency for some of this, but they're gonna want, whoever that funding agency, they're, they're going to want to have some product for their money, so to speak. So, I wanna, wanna develop, uh, 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 ongoing plan as to what's gonna happen with this thing, and who's gonna do what. And I, I think you know, but if you don't, um, you know, the town has hired a planner.
Yeah.
Uh, he's starting on the twenty fourth, and. So, you know, my role is obviously, has been in, well, over the course of the next couple of weeks, be limited, but I don't want this thing to just sit there.
Well, first, I wanna know what our deadline is to get, to get the finished product into the people that gave us money.
I don't know, um, I did know that.
End of August, I, for some reason, I thought it was the end of August.
Bill payment due date is the end of June.
That's what I thought.
Money dries, the money dries up as July one.
But that, that.
I knew that, but I don't know about the money that was already given to us, when we have to have our product to them, I didn't, I thought it was for some reason the end of August, I don't remember.
What we can do is that we can put in a draft to them.
We don't know if they'll accept a draft, we have to find out if they will accept a draft.
Well, they're gonna have to, because.
Well, no, they don't have to, they can say no, we're not accepting one, we need to find out if that is an acceptable way to, to say, we have a draft, and then they might say, you have sixty days to give us a final, or blah, blah, blah. I don't know.
Well, by law, this is, this is our document, you know, the planning board's document. So for us not to review it, edit it, and make it our document is literally not what.
That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Okay, I'm saying, I need to know what the deadline is, because if they say to us, you're gonna have issues with funding if you don't have this information to us on this day. Cause that might have been the agreement, like, you have to do this, this, and this, we're gonna give you money, and you have to have a final on this date, we need to know what that day is. Because i- if it's June thirtieth, then we have to hurry up. If it's August thirty first, we have a little time, we can say, okay, everyone take it, the next two meetings, everyone bring their whatever with you, and go over it. Or whatever. But.
I will find out specifically who the, and I believe there were, Serpide, um.
Serpide had some of it, but we had the housing authority in there, and.
I'll find out who, where the money came from, and what their expectations are, uh, in terms of timeline.
From the housing.
The housing.
Housing.
Right, but we need to know what their deadline is and what they'll accept. If they say, yeah, we'll accept a draft, but we want it finalized, you know, in so many months, cause we don't want this product just being a draft for the next
That's why.
Seven years until we do the next one.
That's why you saw the changes in there, obviously, cause it represented all the housing issues.
Well, besides that, I feel like they had a person leaving, and they had a new person coming in, and they rushed it through and took it away from the committee and hurried it up. And I think that the committee was, I don't know, I know with Chris leaving, things got, you know, stretched out longer, and I don't know, but it's like, it felt like someone was leaving and didn't really do his part with our group, he just kinda did it to get it done before he left, and I don't think that that was the way it should have been handled personally. And I think it's our job now. Yeah, and I think it's our job now to go through it and be like, these things are not okay, we need more of this, and try to figure out what we really want.
I agree that that is exactly where we're at right now, and I believe that's what you're saying as well. And I think that what transpired is a huge lag in time from.
Like, four or five months?
When we should be working on it, and should have had a draft to us. I think we missed four or five months, to your point, of, of just nothing.
Right.
And so when you talk about paying a bill on a due date, well, I'll be happy to push that bill payment four or five months until we get this done, because you don't just.
No, it's a, it's a fair point.
You don't.
Services not rendered.
Excuse me, you don't ask to build, you don't ask to build a house, and you get a foundation, and you say, okay, pay up. That's not how it works.
Like, they don't show up for four months?
You pay in tranches as the thing gets constructed. So in this case, this was not constructed on time, and you wanna get paid on time? It doesn't make sense to me.
Didn't even give us a chance.
And this board absolutely and unequivocally needs to have their input into this thing. You can't just have something written by the housing authority in a template, and then hand it to us, and then we're expected to just sign off on it.
Right.
And pay. I don't think that that makes any sense. So, I think there's a lot of work that still needs to be done, we all need to read it. I've read through it.
I've read through it too. It's crazy.
You need to sit down and go through it, right, I need a, I need a printed copy, cause I need to write on it.
I agree, we all need printed copies, we all need to be able to, you know, make our, uh, red edits, and then come together in a specific meeting to discuss our edits. So, still a lot of work to do, in my opinion.
And they're gonna have to either accept the draft and get paid, or, or not.
And again, because, uh, to be honest, this is a bullet that I had hoped to completely dodge, cause I, I knew it was out there. Uh, but, you know, twelve hours a week, I was gonna draft master plans, but in any case, it, it kinda lingered, lingered, and I'm thinking, that's good, that's, speaking very selfishly. But then I didn't realize that everything financially drops dead at July one. In, in any case, um, the reason for, for wanting to, to discuss this a little further is how do you want me to reach out to the committee? Because based on Grant King's email, the committee's gonna look at this, this being the master planning committee, it's gonna go out to the public. I, I think we need to.
We're done with the committee.
Let's, let's put the brakes on, on this any further, until such time as the planning board has had a chance to either consult with the, the committee, uh, do whatever you've gotta do. But, um, we don't want this going out to the public, uh, where it may change a hundred eighty degrees in, in many cases.
I agree, I, I do think that. I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that we should be completely done with the master plan committee, because I would value people's opinion if they so desire to make edits.
They already did it.
If they, if.
And Philip already put them in there.
Um, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that that.
They already did it though.
I doubt that.
Alright, well, my thing is, we all just got this plan, did they even get to see the plan when it was done? Like, did they get a copy, the master plan committee? Did they get a plan of the?
We.
Copy of the plan?
I can tell you that we got a, a plan that looked like this, it looked like, um, black and white.
Comments along the.
Just kind of, you can go through this nuts and bolts looking thing, but the final painted version with, that looks like a, a magazine, right? That kinda came out when Philip was like, alright.
Leaving tomorrow.
I filled out the template, peace out, and that was it. So it's not like we got to go back again and then edit the, kinda the magazine version.
That's what I thought.
And it was different than the nuts and bolts version.
Right.
It is, it was different.
Okay.
Like, things changed, things that he had in there, that he said that where there was gonna be a picture of whatever, and a subtitle like this, wasn't there. So it's different, it's not the same.
I mean, I, I think the committee did a lot of work getting stuff together, I really do, I feel like it was Serpide that kinda messed up the process personally, I feel like they did, I don't blame the committee for that at all. Um, but I, and if they wanna take it and look at it, and make comments, and bring them to us, that's fine, but I think we should do that too, and whether we, it'd be nice to hear their comments, but I think all in all, when it comes down to it, it's the five members on this board that are gonna make sure it's what they want.
Correct.
Would I like to hear from them? Sure, but I don't think they need to meet as a committee and go over it, they can do their own. If they wanna, if they wanna call a group meeting and sit down together and try to hash out some parts, have that, that's fine with me, but I think that we have to do, and if, it's gonna be on our schedule, if they get their stuff in on time for us to look at it, great, if they don't, we're not gonna, it's gonna be like Saudi too late.
Fair, but I wouldn't wanna.
For all year waiting.
I completely agree with that, and we can have a deadline, and we can, but I would like to keep it open to people to give their feedback.
From the committee, not the town.
Not the, no, 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 I do not want this going out to the public.
Cause we've already done that.
Right, we already did that stuff, like, I, I don't.
The, the public feedback thing is done.
No, if they wanted to do it, they should have got on the committee, cause that's just insane.
And, and, and this is my point, cause recorded, they worked hard.
They did.
Really did, and I respect that heck out of what they've been, cause I was there for, for all of you two, Tom, obviously, for all the meetings.
For some in the beginning.
But they weren't, um, me and Tom were, quite frankly, and Phil, were the only ones who had knowledge of even what was being changed or really decided upon. Their best work, uh, that's not the way to put it, probably some of the best work that was done by the committee was, um, editing the old town plan, and getting things in and out that didn't, weren't relevant, and, you know, stuff like that, that was very valuable. But when it comes to all the changes they're making for bylaws and zoning and all that stuff, and it's not their fault. They have no idea.
But they also weren't engaged properly, in my opinion.
I agree.
It was, it was railroaded, it was like Serpide just took a template and just said.
And the housing, and the housing thing got just slapped right in the middle of the document.
And, and the template got filled out, and they were like, okay, here it is, it's done, see you later, this is done. And it's like, I, I haven't even seen this thing, and it's not like we evolved over time, and we got a chance to put input, we were there at the beginning, and then all of a sudden, we were like done, and there was no middle.
Weeks that we had to like, get this.
Right, like, I, I envision the committee more going through it all, and then saying, taking what you talked about at the meeting, going in and fixing all like the demographics and what Plainville is, and everyone looking at going, yeah, 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 that's what we wanted to change. Like, I think we should take the original one and only change what you need to change, and what the town's about. Like, add things that happened, like, the town is still the same town, it just might have new things in it. And I think we're doing really good, but then it's like, it feels like they did some of that stuff, and then we're trying to go through, taking out things they didn't want, then Serpide just took it, and like you said, took a template and said, okay, here you go, and it's like, wait, that's.
Has nothing to do with.
Like, I thought they should have come back and said, okay, now the next step is this, what do you wanna do about?
With all due respect, they, they didn't even know that, that, that was missing, you know?
Right, they, they did, like, I was expecting to take the old one and morph it into a new one.
That's what I thought.
And.
It would be the same feeling.
It was a cut and run into a new template completely, and then it's, it's hard to reconcile. And we weren't there for that reconciling process, we weren't there to say, okay, where's this, where's this, where's all this stuff that we gave feedback from the old plan, that we said, hey, we wanna make sure that this stuff continues?
Yeah, because you had that spreadsheet, it was like, it had everything in it.
Yeah, we completely documented everything, and then it was like, okay, that's great that you did all that, but we're not doing that, we're doing this. And then it's a, it's a completely different style document, that doesn't.
I know, I want it to be like the old one.
So everything's about the state.
Alright, so, so the idea is, you guys gotta realize exactly what Chris said, it's a state document, they want housing in the state. The fact is, you can't, that those people there don't want any snob towns, they want you to follow the rule. You gotta have people moving into town, you gotta change your zoning, or you're gonna lose your state grants, and that's what's gonna happen.
The implication would be, but they're saying none of that, they say they're not gonna force us to do anything that we don't wanna do.
And that, I brought that fact up to Grant King when he was here that day, because in that draft document, the black and white version, there was a section that said, comply with three A, this is, that's what it started with.
That's what it did start with.
And I said, Grant, we don't want this to say comply with three A. We can say, explore what it would mean to comply with three A if we were to be designated as an MBTA community, not comply with three A.
Every town, you gotta realize, when they did this, every single town in their area, it, we- we- east of a certain spot was an MBTA town. We were not, Avon was not, we escaped it at that point. We didn't escape it anymore now, because of the fact that Foxborough has a terminal now.
But you know that.
Yeah, but we are, we are, we are gonna be an MBTA community.
But you were here for the meetings, Dan, you, you know that we have enough already inventory situation, that we've already met their, what they're looking for.
Literally what.
This is what we did for multiple, multiple meetings, about overlapping, with that we have the ability, we haven't even resourced that yet. You can't say we have to do that, or they want, they may want us to do it, and we hadn't even gone down that road yet, Justin was the first one driving that. You know, so we can't, we can't have that conversation now that we're forced to this, no. And this, every single town that has said no to this, hasn't lost. They're just, if you're in the middle of a grant, you can't, they're gonna hold that over you, but they, they've, the state has lost at every level, that they've.
Well, they, they have lost, but the idea is, when the state, what happens is unfortunately, when the state sends out grants, and we don't get grants, then our taxes will go through the roof, it works that way unfortunately.
That's if you, never mind, I'm gonna go down a whole different road.
Town, our taxes are gonna go through, cause we have to fix all the schools, all the public safety.
Well, there's two sides to every coin.
Enough money for all the resources we have.
I know, but, but at the same time, at the same time, Don, you, you, you have to realize, because you guys live in Plainville, other people wanna live in Plainville.
Everyone wanna live everywhere, there's only so much room in a town, and you can't say to one town, everybody wants to live this, we're gonna make it a.
You know what we did? We did a survey on the master.
Sixteen story buildings, cause everyone wants to live in your town, that's not our vision, so we're not gonna do that.
I would say two things real quick, the, one is, when I brought this up at the master plan committee, Philip was taken aback and was like, hey, you know, I put that in there like that, because literally, if you were to draw a circle around Oasis, and find some adjacent land next to that, and include that in the circle, you're basically done.
Right, for the.
The other side that I'd like to point out is that we have an open consultation with, um.
Serpide.
Not Serpide, the other, the, the, the ladies that came in.
Yeah, the two ladies.
Dream Collaborative.
Yeah.
The Dream Collaborative came in here, and they were gonna help us, and I'd love to get an update on that, and help us to understand, if we apply the formula to our town, what does it look like? Because it should be smaller than Rantham, it should be smaller than every town around us, because we're a smaller town. And I'd love to see that number, because maybe that circle that Philip was talking about drawing around Oasis is even smaller than what he envisioned, based on his calculations.
Well, it's still, regardless of size of community, it's still a fifty acre requirement. The, if you incorporate, um.
No.
No, I haven't seen anything that doesn't, that says anything other than fifty acres.
Otherwise, but even then, we still have fifty acres, cause we have Village Green, we have Oasis. No, but it can't be small, it can't be like, three, 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 it has to be a big, but if you took Oasis, and you took Village Green, those are our two things right there.
And we're still above our requirement for affordable housing.
Yeah, the, the concern with incorporating the Oasis is if, if they were to say, we'll find them, and I don't know what restrictions that they may or may not have, but if they were to say, look, we'll just, um, go from a forty B to a conventional subdivision, that, not subdivision, but a conventional project that has fifteen units per acre, cause I figured they've got seventeen.
Most towns are going with a forty R right now, because it's.
Cause what you're, what you're saying, Joe, to finish your point, is that we could affect our.
Well, I mean, you, you could, cause, uh, I keep, I call it town and country, I don't know what they call themselves across from the schools.
Village Green, but I mean, Village Green is enormous, we could take them, and we could do manmar, we don't even have to include Oasis. I think we should leave Oasis alone, because they are a forty B.
Yeah, and that's not even including some of our senior places that are pretty structured under, not low income, but definitely affordable.
But if you were to incorporate Village Green or Town and Country, um, and I forget the acreage, I, I had done a, a quick look, see. They're either sixteen to seventeen, they're, they're over the fifteen units per acre. So incorporate them, they're not a forty B, a- and some other area that is nearby, you know, you get your fifty acres. But getting back to the Dream Collaborative, I've tried to find out, and I've made, at, at this point, three phone calls to, um, executive office of Living, Livable Communities, wherever they call themselves now, no one can give me an answer, no one has responded. What's the process of being designated a mass, uh, MBTA adjacent community? Is it legislative? Not, uh, it, I don't think it's as simple as Foxborough becomes a, an MBTA community, and we automatically, because all the other MBTA communities are. Because all the other MBTA communities are listed as MBTA communities as a result of legislation.
They have bit off more than they can chew.
No, but the point is all. But all, up until now, all MBTA and MBTA adjacent communities. Have been designated by virtue of the legislature. It's not just something happens and you're automatically, the legislature.
Well, yeah, but they, right, but when they did that, Joe, they, they went around, they had their guy go around and say, okay, what town's. Border an MBTA station, and that's how they found their designation. We were lucky enough not to.
Right.
Order a town.
And under the map they're still using, they still don't recognize us.
Exactly.
So we need to just shut up. Right.
That's right, we, we need to be prepared.
Right.
And we need to know what it means, and if they do apply the formula to us, that we understand what that means so that we are prepared. As to whether we wanna be one of the people, one of the towns.
But see, that's what I tried.
Say no thank you.
That's what I tried in my response to Master Plan, it's like Plainville's always been ready to do their share and more. We don't need the state telling us to do this or that.
Right.
Our history shows what we've done. And it shows that we're more in compliance and above all these different things than all our neighbors. I don't wanna hear this.
I know, I like how you worded it, Tom, though, with the, if we became an MBT community, we would, you know.
We would know what, what it would take to be in compliance.
Right, and we decide if we're gonna be in compliance, not that we're going to be in compliance, we'll decide at the time how. What, and, yeah, what and how we're gonna do it.
Because we've done a lot of work over the past couple of years on our own zoning changes for what we thinks right for our town, to have them come in and say. You have to do this. It's like, well, we've already done all of that. The way we wanna do it.
That's why we have a planning board and zoning board of appeals.
We're likely to do it.
Make our own decision.
Yeah.
I've even heard people like, when I was talking to Serpent and stuff like that, we're like the model. Like, literally like the model of like how a town should be. They're like, wow, Plainville, you guys are rocking it. You guys, and, and I've heard people like, your zoning is perfect, perfect. And now they wanna change it. And it's like, there's just enough protection and when times were better, no one grew faster than us compared to all around these places, they didn't. So it's not time to like open the doors, it's time to make sure we have our protections. And guess what? Location, 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 location. People are gonna come here. When they do come here, you know what it is? It's a beautiful town. The people who live in this town recognize that. When they gave us the survey back, they told us, this is how we want our town. We gotta stop listening to everyone else and listen to our people. I'm sorry, it just has to happen because everyone's out there trying to force us to be Franklin or Wood Sackett or. You know, all these other, North Attleboro even, you know, trying to be something we're not. And I'm okay, and everyone in this town's okay with that.
And I would say, in that same vein, what you hear is people say, oh, well, this MBTA community thing is just a zoning change. It's just a zoning change. You're only changing the zoning, they're not gonna force you to build anything, it's just a zoning change.
It's all by rights.
Zoning change means you have the right to build.
Right, it's all by rights. If you read that, that master plan, everything, by right, by right, by right, by right, by right, by right. And it's just, you lose your ability to, to have independence.
Right, and to control how the shape of the town becomes.
Right.
If you just zone everything as whatever, then you just.
They wanna put right out here, right in front of us, they wanna triple the density of the town, right in front of us. Like say Anne Galvin. Love you Anne, really mean it, and I'm serious. They, her size lot, you can put like three different units on, all the way up on that hill.
It'd look like Southie.
It would be ridiculous.
Irish battleships right down the row.
And then when we do clusters up, you know, wherever they pop up or try to pop up, then they have to, by right. They have to have affordable housing be something they can do. You know what I mean? It's just, everything's by right. It's like crazy. And, you know, we lose our ability to govern our town with that master plan that's sitting right there right now. That's a problem. Yeah, where's the dumpster?
Where's the dumpster go?
Where's the dumpster go?
Uh, so, um, I will find out, um, A, who the funding source was and B, what their expectations were. In the meantime, I will, uh, let, uh, Serpent know that we don't want this distributed to the public, that the next step is the planning board will review and edit. The, you know, again, the, the, and I know you know this, but, uh, the timeframe for Serpent is July one. And beyond that, they have no funding, um, and you'd have to use your twenty hours and twenty, twenty hours from the plan, the, the planning board has. And twenty hours the select board has, um, so you have that as a, a resource, but I'll find out what your timelines are in terms of. Meeting obligations.
And that's not an unreasonable task because the structure's there.
Right.
You know what I mean?
Claw back four months though, can, can, is it possible to claw back some time?
I don't.
I agree.
Grant kept saying, they're all done July one, um.
Cause that's just garbage that we literally for a quarter did nothing.
More than a quarter.
And then we're just gonna be deadlined into accepting this plan, I mean.
They put through like with, like a month ago, and then they're saying we're gonna reintroduce it to the public, I'm like, we've already done this, what, what do you think?
Yeah, we're not doing that. When it's done, the public can see it. We're not having like.
Yeah.
Seven thousand people have input on it. I'm sorry. That's why we had a committee, you had your chance to raise your hand and be on the committee or come to the meetings.
That's why we had the survey.
Exactly, so.
And don't tell me we didn't go anywhere, we went everywhere for the survey, so.
So can we get printed copies?
Yes, I will, I, I printed off a copy for myself using, you know, the town printer because it's a lot. I'll print off five clean copies. And if someone wants this.
Am I okay to use the document that I got because you can make all the changes on the, on the side?
Just pass this down so you, that's what the finished draft.
But that has all the, um, graphics and stuff.
Yep.
Yeah, see, the document I was working with.
I wanna look at.
There's no graphics.
I need to like have it.
This is different.
Yeah.
This is different than, than, than the one that looks like this, I'm telling you.
Yeah, I have.
Was in this, it's not in this.
So the one that you had, the one that was like that, do you think it was better?
Um.
Had more of what you wanted in it.
No.
No.
No, it was still broken.
That right there.
It's just different.
That right there is with the edits that we made at the Master Plan Level.
Some.
Yeah, cause I know I put a budget.
Yeah, and still, I made some edits.
Two.
After, off of this.
Oh, I didn't get that.
Like for instance.
You got that document, I don't.
That just came out, the twenty ninth of.
Yeah, I don't know how he did that.
He works fast.
I guess, right?
Page two.
I think after reading my edits, I probably didn't wanna give it.
I have something that the Master Plan Committee had, was working off of, that had, it was, uh, an editable. Had everyone's edits on the side.
Yeah.
In fact, I just took it up, I just took it upstairs.
I mean. Let me show those guys this real quick. I mean, guys, look, look at it, one, two, Norton.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
That's what they do. I found a bunch of different typos in there where they, they, Swansea, Swansea was the big one.
Bottom bubble on the left.
Swansea was the big one. Did you see the part where it was like two or three pages, Swansea, 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 Swansea?
Oh, there's a lot of reasons to not accept it, there's, there's.
But this is, they said this, the draft as of five thirty, which was.
Five twenty nine, I think it's.
Few days ago.
Yep, and I've already started ma- making edits and submitting them to Grant.
And yet they still.
You get that, you.
I don't know, I forgot.
The day I got it.
Oh, I, I was going off the old, the one before that, without the graphics and stuff.
That one's defunct.
Then I'll, I'll print out. Well, the, you saw the spreadsheet. Part of that email had a spreadsheet that had all the edits, you were, you had, Christ, three pages of edits in there.
I mean, some of the, some of the pictures are bad about Fox Market, I gotta give him credit for that.
No, I do, that's what I like about it, is that there's, there's a great timeline, there's a good baseline.
Doctor's waiting room, reading highlights, you know?
No, I, I'm saying, I know.
I, I disagree with that because. Wanna set the baseline for what the town has been, where the town, where your town is going, so it's. I don't mind that flow as a template. It's just, it, it needs work.
Up until, to page sixty eight, which shows all the historic stuff, shows the development of town, the, you know, the, the trends over the last. Fifty years, up to sixty eight, that's fine, that's one that'll get into.
Yeah.
Actionables, if you will, that it starts to, uh, go sideways.
Yeah.
So I only went for that section.
Yeah, I just looked at the pretty part, I related.
Skip over it, but it's, it's good to have as a baseline, cause where, it, it's, like, that stuff should be documented and, and easily accessible, you know?
Ron Hirsch, I have, that's no longer there, he's old, he's in name.
Well, that just happened.
That's, that's older though.
That's the thing, is like, there, there's stuff in there that's like, oh, these, these kids are from the PAL and now they're the captains of their baseball team. It's like a snip from, from Facebook and I'm like, I don't know if I want that in there. I don't know if I like that. I don't, and it, did you get parents? Well, it's from the public domain, so the parents posted it, so it's from the public domain, so.
I don't know if I want people, other people's kids in there, just put a picture of the side.
Look, it's, it's a master plan. Have a little more decorum to it.
Right, I don't think it should have like, who's my kid playing baseball? No, it's like, we're not gonna do that.
Yeah, I, that was my, that was my first.
Put the sign up or put like the parking lot.
See, Stan, you're doing exactly what the average person's gonna do. You know what you're doing right now, Stan? You're looking at pitches.
The edges.
That's all you're doing.
Yeah, but I haven't got to the page, I haven't, I see the senior center, I mean, some of their pictures are good. Library and stuff, but I haven't gone to where they change it. And that's what I'm trying to say now. This picture of the, um, town hall, when, when did they start changing that? Okay, divisions. I guess it would be under the vision of what Plainville would want now, right? And that's where.
I'm almost thinking, we flipped this thing. Like, that's my edit number one, flip it.
Put the pitches at the end.
You open it and you get the vision. And then if you wanna read about the history, where we came from, that's at the end, because look, you, look at how much you had to go through to get to.
Right, yeah.
What we're talking about.
I'm afraid people wouldn't even get to that.
So I say, you sit in the dentist or the doctor's office, you're reading through highlights and you're trying to put together a crossword puzzle.
If you wanna go, if you wanna go to the pictures of Fox Market, it should go to the very end, I don't mind it being in there, but it should be at the end. We don't lead with Fox Market, in my opinion. That's just.
You guys need to get the source.
Develop a housing production plan.
Right, I mean, that's a PDF document, so you can't edit it, um.
Yes, you can. I can edit it. I have that. It's called Acrobat. Pro.
So you're gonna want the source content, which is all the images and, and the actual text as separate items, so you guys can then do what you need to do.
And first of all, any document that comes to us, we should have the original, we should become the authors, not them.
Yeah, a- again, I. You know, uh, dealing with what we've got.
Oh, I know. Joe, what are you doing?
I just, uh, like I say, I, this is a bullet I've successfully dodged for six months on.
Chasing you down, man.
As I said, this is, uh, Heather Hill, those are the two things, uh. And they've kind of bitten at me.
He wants to retire again before that stuff hits the fan. Anyways, so I think we have marching orders, yes?
And I'll talk to, uh, Serpent and, um, tell him, don't distribute this to anyone.
Why would they have success stories of Rainham in there? Remember Paramount Development? Over there on, uh, forty four?
That's to defend, that's to defend the actionable situation they're talking about. They use other towns' situations and they're trying to defend their decision to put that into our town.
And then they're saying, if you use the forty three D, you'll be able to get the Mass Work Grants.
It's all about that.
For the tip project, but then the idea is, okay, so what happens if they, if they don't like this? And then all of a sudden the state says that they're not gonna give us any money for the tip project. I'm just asking, I mean, I don't.
I'm, I'm sorry, but this.
I've thought of that as well, is if, if we were to like fight the MBTA community thing and say, hey, we're all set with that, and then it hits us with the tip project.
At some point, we have to have independence. I don't care.
Yes, but the thing is, is that if it comes down, we're an MBTA community, we have to figure it out, we can't be like, no, we're not gonna do it just because we don't want to. If we can figure out a way to do it and it's fine, then we should do it. I think we should just do our best to do it, but it's like, I don't think we should just automatically say, whatever you say, we're gonna agree to it. No, I do not agree with that. I wanna say, you present us with this and we will figure out if it's what's best for us. How we can best do it, and if we can do it at all, and if we can't, we're gonna tell you no.
Right.
And if we're gonna be an MBT community, it's probably not gonna be until after the tip project starts anyways.
Oh, absolutely.
So.
And you know what?
Get that moving so that we can.
The state's gonna drag their feet as long as they can.
Gave us a date.
No, I mean, as far as these other, if there's appeals of the stuff where all, like Rhythm and all these towns that have said no.
Yeah, they're not gonna come hit us with it, with all this litigation pending, I would hope, but.
Well, we're in Philadelphia here, green cities.
Trip around the world, buddy.
We are, you know, Fairbrough's a green city for God's sake, or we are a green city.
Yeah, this, this citation's.
I don't want crap in there, but other cities and towns around the country, I don't care.
Like, you know.
They got, they, they did a good job on like the Field of Dreams and the Park and stuff though.
Well, where, where it makes.
That doesn't.
But you haven't read what they wrote, just cause they've got pictures and doesn't mean what they wrote is okay.
To use examples though, is within our vision, if we, for example, they, we said in. The survey responses and, you know, conservation, we've all said like, let's preserve our lakes. So we have Turnpike Lake and Lake Merrimashie, which are both on the list of great ponds of Massachusetts. Not too much is great about either of those ponds. If you fall in, you will likely drown because there are.
So many weeds.
Creatures in there.
The Turnpike and Merrimashie Lake to promote lakeside walking and water-based activities.
And you too can, can have one fish a year out of those ponds.
Oh, yeah.
You don't wanna take a fish out of Turnpike Lake, nor the, nor Merrimashie, because Merrimashie, you got all the plume. Easy, Joe, I don't wanna get into that.
No, but I mean, I think if we're gonna talk about our lakes, one of the things in our master plan should be to clean our lakes, to have like. Weed control and clean them so they are beautiful lakes, then you can actually go in without getting a rash or a disease.
My point, you're making my point, is that when they give those. And when they, when they give you those examples of, hey, in this town, they did this. It's a, it's a guide to, hey, we can clean up our la- lakes or whatever we wanna clean up environmentally, similar to what these towns did. That's, I mean, so again, I, I'll defend the document a little bit there because it's, you know, if, if it cites Falmouth or if it cites Bourne having removed fragmites or whatever.
They just found this site North Attleboro and how they cleaned all their ponds. Like, they do a really good job cleaning those ponds. Falls Pond is cleaned all the time.
Oh my god, this is beautiful, I want a picture of this one, this is my spirit. Right here, Foster.
Gonna be some.
Giving spirit and sense of community.
There's a lot.
You beat me to the.
Well, there is, but it's all around.
At, uh, Boston, uh, Bill and Mel.
Middle Housing.
He gave you a lot of money.
Well, we talked about at length, and that's one thing we did do, is talk about at length with Phil and those guys about the middle, missing middle. But we also said that we have to find the right place and try to find the right, you know, situation. And that just tells you, you gotta do, kinda do it. You know what I mean? And it's like, all right, well.
Gives you ideas of, of what you could do as part of that vision. If we, if you do wanna do that as a town. It's just a, like a, again, it's recommendations and guidance as things stand now. In three or four years from now, things could be.
Ultimately, that's what that document is anyways, but the problem is, it's asking us to make, what Joe just said. Serious town meeting decisions to change zoning and bylaws or whatever.
Right.
It, it's making us change who we are fabrically. It just is. And if you look at.
Which, you'll have to highlight like where that is in there, cause I don't think I've uncovered that.
The missing middle?
Yeah, like I, I, like, just perused that section thus far.
Oh, my goodness.
I haven't dug in as well.
The responsible parties and then it, it, you read it, right?
Well, I, Frank just glanced over, but.
I, that's where I spent all my editing time.
A lot. And, you know, these few months have taught me, uh, uh, quite a bit that I really didn't consider before. Uh, when I look at, uh, the house lot being two hundred fifty, three hundred thousand pounds, I'm just aghast. You know, I've got my house, my kids have their houses, but, um, I'm thinking, if, if someone's out there that. You know, I've got my house, my kids have their houses, but um I'm thinking, if if someone's out there that, a young couple wants to build or buy a house, they've gotta start with a two hundred fifty to three hundred thousand dollar lot that the developer buys, they're not gonna, developers is gonna spend, and you're in the business, three hundred thousand dollars for a lot and put up a a ranch uh of, you know, twelve hundred, they're gonna put up a mega mansion so they can capitalize on their investment. Where people, you know, I'm looking in Norton off of Pine Street, starting nine hundred fifty thousand dollars.
That's right.
Heather Hill.
But see, that's not, that's not just a Plainville problem.
No, 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 I'm I'm I'm.
It's a global problem.
It's a global problem.
Well, it's a Massachusetts problem more than a global.
It's global, it's worldwide.
Heather Hill, they're, you know, they're senior restricted housing, starting at eight hundred thousand dollars. And and so my point is simply that, I mean, I live on two acres surrounded by, you know, land that we own. I love the idea that I got large lots. I used to love Rehoboth, you know, that would go as high as five acres for a lot. But when you think of it, isn't that a tremendous waste of land? So I, I mean, I come at it from from that perspective, but.
Depends on, well, it depends though, Joe.
I mean, I.
I don't think every piece of land has to have a house on it. I think we need to have green space and people do wanna have bigger yards. We have a lot of farms.
You know, why, why in Arizona do you go out to Arizona and they build houses fifteen feet apart, yet I can drive for eight hours and not see another house, another building or something? No, all the buildings are like on top of each other. I prefer to live out here because they're not on top of each other. And that's what our town has so told us. That's what they like about our town.
But I mean, if we're gonna, and it's like, I see the little middle community thing and I just, I'm not sure if I love the idea or not, middle housing, I mean, but I think if it's gonna be something that's even an option, I think we should have to come to planning board. And I think that it should be in specific areas. They can't just do it everywhere. Like, they can't go driving up a road and be like, let's knock down the house and put two up, or, ooh, there's a lot right there, let's squeeze three tiny little houses in there. It's gonna look weird, awkward. If someone wants to put in a neighborhood and we give them some kind of break on certain things because they're gonna build all affordable houses, like not affordable, but like middle, the missing middle houses, like smaller startup houses. And they wanna do something, you might say, okay, we'll make the lot smaller for you because, you know, you're gonna do all twelve hundred square foot houses. Fine, you know, and they all have to look different. They all have to have something unique. We don't want to be like, like you do. When you look at some of the neighborhoods where you're like, oh, my God, you're like, I don't even know which house is which. They're all the same except a shade off in color. You're like gray, white, dark gray.
They did it on purpose in my neighborhood and they didn't let other people come in and build different houses. It's like, this is silly. I can't stand it. It drove me nuts.
Like my street, every single house is different.
Yeah, that's great. That's how it should be.
And some have smaller yards, some have bigger yards, some have a big backyard, big front yard, like they're all over the place. Like, they just, you know, I think it would be nicer to have some of those houses, like houses that size right there.
Exactly.
A whole neighborhood of that.
But the thing is, is like, we really can't dictate that.
Right.
It's, I mean, we can, we can write it in a document all day long, but the economy, the.
Right, but it could be something that we wish for and we could put in there saying like, maybe encourage smaller middle community houses. You know, or, you know, work with, work with contractors to try to find that area where they, when they're gonna build a neighborhood that they might want to make smaller homes, starter home neighborhood, and they can get a break or something, you know, like smaller lots, or we'll give them like, you know, lower fees or.
Right, Joe hit the thing though. What it is, is the land cost is driving it up. And technically, some of these towns, like in Franklin there, you saw, if you guys go down to Franklin towards the big Y, you see the houses on the left-hand side, the old Cook Farm, where they gave them the five thousand square foot lot and they let the people put that in. When they started, that was excellent because the people had a five thousand square foot lot, they put in a smaller house and you could do it. Because they weren't taking the whole acre and they said, instead of having the two acres zoning we have up on in Rentham, we have two acres zoning. Somebody offered us six hundred thousand for one lot up there about three weeks ago, just to have a lot before they built their house. Now, if that was five thousand square feet, you'd say, yeah, I'm gonna have, give me a hundred thousand and yeah, what a difference, six hundred thousand, a hundred thousand, right there. There's your difference in lands.
It can't be, I guess what I'm saying, it can't be by right. And I was talking to Don earlier and and I've I've had this thought in my mind that there ought to be an overlay in towns that, you know, whatever the underlying zoning, whether it's thirty thousand square feet, forty-five thousand, sixty thousand, that's the the underlying zone, but there'd be a, for lack of a better word, a knock my socks off zone overlay that says, here's what you can build, one one house per sixty thousand square feet. Come in with something that is uh, you know, scaled to what we need, that looks nice, that's well thought out, and then we'll we'll give you a bonus of two to three times a density bonus, but you've gotta impress us. It can't be by right, cause you know, if it's by right, what's gonna go up? Vinyl sided, you know, square box, ugly looking stuff that's cheap.
Lowest common denominator.
I call them plastic people boxes.
Hey, I got vinyl siding.
Uh, but, I mean, again, it's it's.
Is what it is, plastic.
And I mentioned to Don this this earlier today, if you've ever been to Florida uh Disney, um, there's a town that was uh Disney designed, Celebration.
Yep.
It's beautiful.
I've been there.
But it's, you know, I can reach out.
It's New England style.
I can pass you a cup of sugar through my window to yours.
But it's cool.
But it's, it you, I don't wanna say it's inviting, cause I I was gonna use something crass, but.
Right.
But that to me is a development that could go anywhere. Uh, it doesn't have to be Florida. I mean, the styles are all different. So my my point is simply, if there was an overlay that said, we're gonna grant you a a five times multiplier density bonus, but you've gotta impress the bejesus out of us. Uh, and, you know, I don't know how you do that, uh, because everyone's taste is different, but that's that's my rattling.
Design guidelines.
Right.
Well, does, and I don't know that you can, you can set up in advance, this is what it's gonna look like.
Agreed.
No, but you can, you know what you have guidelines for, like, we don't want you to stick these houses and make them really tall and whatever. It's like, we wanted to be like, we're talking, if we're talking like a starter family home and you wanna come in and say, okay, look at, I could either build two million dollar mansions on there, or maybe I could put in eight starter homes and as long as they're not crammed on top of each other, but they're only gonna be a thousand to twelve hundred square feet, might be like, okay, let's talk. How is this neighborhood gonna look? Like, we want it to have like little driveways and we want it to have like a little bits of yard, but it doesn't have to be huge. But it's something that, you know, a young family or an older person could just go by and have low maintenance and like a cute house like that one, or, you know, some of the ones on my street are cute. They're adorable, they're tiny.
Norton has in uh Red Mill Village Senior.
Yep, that's, that's the one that did yourself division, right? Cause you're on uh.
Yeah, he won an award for that.
He won an award.
No, for our neighborhood.
Red Mill Village. Everything slight, not everything, but slightly different, very compact, but very nicely done.
And everybody that, everybody that bought there never lost a penny. That's the other thing.
We ain't losing pennies in our neighborhood. I said, we ain't losing any pennies in our neighborhood right now, that's for sure.
Well, this here, this here is a little out of whack. Three hundred and sixty-nine thousand for the medium uh sale price. Right now it's five. Two thousand twenty. Right now it's five hundred and fifty in Plainville. Or five sixty-one last.
Yeah, but that's, it's all happened within the past couple of years. Everything's out of whack right now.
Three sixty-nine is reasonable.
Well, we we gotta, it's good conversation, but we gotta, what's our plan? We, we're gonna, you're gonna do what you're gonna do.
I'm gonna find out, first of all, who funded it, what their expectations are, what they'll take as a finished product. Um, I'll print out copies of this.
Can you watch what he said and say?
Yeah, and call just last time we know.
And say what he said to him?
I'm sorry?
Can you make sure that you say what Tom said in this meeting? I thought it was an excellent thing. He goes, for five months, you did not fulfill your job, so I want not to have this deadline put on us.
I, as I understand it, cause I'm I'm dancing around the edges of this. Serpide wasn't the funding agency. Serpide was the contractor. They're the ones that did the work and are paid out of, out of the funding source. So I think, you know, you you have issues apparently with Serpide's work, but the funding source.
Well, the funding source put their input in it, trust me.
I don't know. I I don't know who that.
It was the housing, state housing, you know, coalition.
Gonna find out, so we'll.
Right, right.
We can speculate.
It should probably, on that, on that document actually, it probably says it. Cause originally when we were reading the draft, it actually said on that draft.
Funded by?
Yep.
I I don't know.
So it might be on that copy that you have up there.
And, I mean, they can't force us, no way. I mean, talk about going litigation. I mean, they can't force us to accept that.
Well, I don't know.
By law, they can't.
I think that's what they're saying.
No, it's not, we can just say, we can just go.
We can just take paper shredder.
We can't say you would too, though. Grant said he would. Hope so.
That's the danger.
Reprise so that you have something that you all agree with and that the town is comfortable with reflects the town's.
Yeah, and 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 that's what, that's what Grant King said that he would help us do. He was very amenable. He he seemed like he would be great to work with.
Stanley, why don't you just keep that copy?
It's just a matter of.
He's like, Don.
He's so fascinated by.
I don't know, I I was.
He's looking for his last name in the document.
No, it's a plenty of them, but the idea is, I was looking at the acknowledgements and under the acknowledgements, they don't give any word about the um, what do you call it? Who paid for?
Funding source.
The funding source. They give uh town staff and then they give Serpide staff. But the idea is that they didn't give any kind of value of this here. They gave the this here, see? Director of Housing and that one there, and then later on, Director of Comprehensive Planning, Grant King, he was the Deputy Director of Conservation. So I thought they might have given somebody, you know, some other company or, but they only gave Serpide staff. They didn't even give anybody else any credit on this.
Well, they're the ones who technically wrote it, but the information they got and the funding they got was from the Massachusetts Coalition of Housing.
I think the information, I I don't think they got, it's a information from Mass Housing, they just took other people's master plan and took snippets out of theirs.
Well, what would Norton and Swansea in the plan give you that idea?
Right, but that's all they did. It's not like they took a document from the ma, they just went to other towns and said, all right, these are good, just use these, change the names.
You could probably go onto the Norton's Town site and find their master plan.
No, it's on, it's all on Serpide's website. Says right there, master plan. That's why I clicked on it and I saw you sitting right over there looking at all the boards that were up around.
Oh, right.
I said, there you are, Tina.
Yeah, that's in there too, actually, that picture.
A picture of her.
Yeah.
Her and Justin and somebody else. I saw that. And they even got Jeff Kenny's new proposal in here too.
Yeah, clip from the website.
Clip from the website, huh?
All the stuff that's in there is just part from public domain. You can just grab it.
Yeah.
Yeah, you need permission.
Alright.
Alright, uh, just two other pieces of of business. You've got minutes.
That's true, that's true.
Okay, we have minutes.
Uh, just four twenty-nine. Four-three has already been accepted. That should have been four seventeen, but uh it's, for the moment, it's four twenty-nine, needs to be accepted.
Not the four-three.
Four-three has already been accepted. Uh, I meant to put four seventeen in there, but since it's not on the agenda, you can accept it later.
Yeah, and you gave us two copies of uh April twenty-ninth?
Maybe I had.
Oh, actually.
Two put to you.
I had two.
It'll only be four twenty-nine.
Okay.
I only have one. If someone doesn't have one, something's missing.
Okay.
Okay, I remember this video, yeah.
Yeah, I'll make a motion we accept the mass printed.
Second, that.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Anything further? All in favor?
And the last piece of business, um, apparently, uh, you folks have funded through a uh, exact title of it, Planning Board Revolving Fund have funded the pool house, not renovation, but uh basically a new pool house. Uh, they're gonna need another ten thousand dollars, according to an email from Jim Merritt.
Is that a part of the CPA thing?
No.
But where's that coming? We gave them money out of the solar, I mean, out of the billboards, wasn't that?
Right.
And how much did we give them though?
I don't know what you've given them so far. I I don't know. Um, I just found out what the source was and this was kind of um, arm twisting money, let's put it that way, that Chris was able to.
Yeah, I know. Well, I understand.
So what is the ten thousand for?
Yeah.
Uh, to finish off the the project.
And it'll be done, they won't need anymore.
Again, all I can tell you is that, um, I'll read it, cause.
Does it say how much the project has cost so far? Has it cost more than what we gave them?
Oh, clearly ten thousand more.
Well, clearly, I'm saying, have we used any other money other than the stuff from us?
I don't know what you've given them.
Do you want?
I don't have my book with me tonight, I don't know.
I forget. I wanna say something like seventy, but I can't.
No, more than that, a hundred and fifty-ish, a hundred and thirty.
Was it?
Oh, yeah. That's why, well, do you wanna just wait until we, does he need it today or does, is it one of those, we should get an accounting to see?
Well, the guys are gonna sit on their thumbs unless they get the money.
Well, I mean.
Well, I don't know about that.
Again, I'm just looking at, uh, good afternoon, we have reached our limit for the expense of the pool house. We will need to have the planning board vote for more. Could you just ask me, could you just give me an estimate how much more we will need? And this was to Jim and Jim responded ten thousand dollars.
Curious to see as to which that ten thousand will go to and.
Well, there there was some conversation that they needed money for siding and some plumbing, but apparently they had misclassified or had had to had changed sixteen, a sixteen thousand dollar entry so that the plumbing got taken care of. Now, whether this is still for siding, I don't know.
Didn't they use some of that money to fix the building next to it too? You know, there's that other outline building, no? They didn't do anything to that? You know, where you kept on like storage for all the stuff?
Everything's like all one building now.
No.
No, there's a separate building.
John's old office.
All the old office.
I thought we, I thought they were changing the use of that. They had to do a couple of things, but I don't know, I could be wrong, just. Doesn't really matter. I guess it's, like you said, I mean, what has to be done is ten thousand enough, you know?
I mean, in the whole scheme of things, like we're talking like, we already spent a hundred and fifty, is ten thousand really that big of a deal to finish it? But it's like, we kinda wanna know what they're doing. It's like, I feel like they started the project, they took the money, we haven't heard from them since. And it's like, that's fine, cause they're doing a good job. I know it's been, you know, that we're getting a lot. Like, it would have cost us a million dollars to do that if we hired, if we didn't have it done in-house. But they also have to understand that we have to understand what we're signing off on. You know, you can't be like, oh, I think we need another ten grand to finish. Finish what? What do you need? Like, can we see the receipts of what you've already spent, since it's our money?
Can you guys give me a, like a background on this thing? Like, what was the, what's the history of this? How did this all, how does it come to the planning board? How did this come about?
Because we had money from like pilots and billboards and things like that.
Billboards, yeah, the billboards.
So we got money, like when they came in, they would pay us, like, and we put it in reserve to like use it for other things.
And it's under, it's under our guidance, that fund?
And when they proposed doing the house down there, they looked and they, you know, had architects come and it was millions of dollars and then it was like people, I was like, those, that's your fault. And John's like, all I want is a place that the toilet works and I can bring the kids inside if it rains and fix the pool house and blah, blah, blah. So the pool house was a big problem, so they, you know, came with plans, which I know I must have at home somewhere. And everything looked good and it was like, the amount of money we were getting, it was like a fraction, like seriously, like ten percent of what it would have cost, ten or fifteen percent of what it would have cost if we hired outside to even do part of it. So we we all agreed that the plan looked good, let's just do it. We'll have it done like by our townspeople and they'll do it. So, but I, I mean, I haven't been down there at all lately and I haven't heard anything on, like, there hasn't even been an update to us, which would have been nice if maybe they came and updated us, just like, hey, you know, we're at this part of the project, this is all the stuff we've done, we're up to the plan. So maybe they need to come to the next meeting, like if they want more money, they need to come to the next meeting and kinda give us an overview.
That'd be nice.
What they did, if they followed the plan, if, you know, what our money has been spent on, and then what they need the additional money for, and then we're more happy to talk to them about it. Cause I don't see any reason why I'm not giving it to them, but we need to know what it's for. Mark, it's like, it's like your kid going, I know you gave me allowance, so I need more money. Okay, here's another twenty. Like, what did you do with the money I gave you?
I know the horse is out of the barn on this thing and I think you and I talked um about. I know the horse is out of the barn on this thing, and I think you and I talked um about this, but uh the shower situation, you have to shower before you go into the pool, you have to shower when you come out of the pool, obviously.
I don't think they have to shower when you come out of the pool.
Well, okay. You gotta shower before you go into the pool.
Yeah.
And um.
A lot of places do that.
I was just wondering, like, why is that something, you put your bathing suit on, you're going into the pool regardless, why does it have to be inside?
It's state regulation.
No, we had outside showers all the time, didn't we?
Yeah, but times change. Like, when you're updating things now, they make you update them to the current.
Oh, I don't know what the current.
Requirements, not.
That's all.
Like previous.
The horse is out of barn, I'm just.
I mean, no, I get what you're saying, cuz they used to just be those little things where you went in and out and their doors just swang, but, you know, I think they want them to have to walk through, shower, and walk out into the pool area so they know that, you know.
Or even like, like a military shower, like whatever you have at the beach, you just pull a chain and it just
Right.
Get some of the sweat off of you, sort of before you jump in the pool.
Or dirt or whatever you.
Yeah, like dirt and grime and wubby kids.
I I do remember that from their meeting when they came and they originally presented it with Chris Yar.
Yeah.
I do remember.
I agree, though, what you're saying, like, when you go, when you go to places now, just out to a shower, you can just walk up and just rinse off and go get in your car.
That was kinda my.
Right, like from the beach.
Spend a lot of money on square footage, I think, even though it was a great deal.
But I think because it's a bath house at a pool, there's more requirements, and maybe they wanna give people the option to be able to take off their bathing suit and then.
Sure.
Rinse off.
I don't think you can take off the, it's a public shower situation.
It doesn't have doors on it or no doors? Oh, okay, never mind then. Oh, all right, just walk through.
Yeah.
I don't know. Well, I mean, it is a pool house and they were already in.
The only way you can change is.
I thought they were like, I thought you were saying they were stalls now, I'm like, oh, that doesn't make sense.
The only way you can change is in the bathrooms. Without it being just an open, public situation.
No, they have baths, yeah, but they have bathrooms in the old pool house.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just saying, the new ones have bathrooms too. I'm just saying, but that's the only private.
The new one, the new one only has uh two bathrooms, and they're for the people that are in the park. The pool house has bathrooms with doors on them that you can use.
Right, only two, I think, right?
No, I thought there was maybe, no, cuz I thought there was double. You had a, you had the men's side and the boy, I mean, it used to be the boy's side and the girl's side.
Yeah.
And there was two stalls with doors on them, and then the shower to go there. The bathrooms that are being constructed are for the people that are at the pool, I mean, at the.
That's fine, as long as it's being addressed, cuz I remember looking at the plans, going like, well, whatever, it wasn't a big thing.
The plans, I maybe, maybe some, I thought they were fine. But I mean, I just feel like it should be something that we should have been updated on, and they're using our money and.
Uh, well, for what it's worth, I know that Chris was uh.
Well, it's the money we oversee.
The last time he was here, a couple of weeks ago, he went to visit it. Uh, so I'm, you know, it may have been they were reporting to Chris and Chris told him, great job, which I have, I have, I see it as I drive by, I've not been in there.
I am.
So I can't give you any more information uh other than that.
And I know it's hard, you, you know, full-time. He was full-time. When he worked, he was full-time, and he would come in, he'd be like, oh, by the way, I went and did, went by this, and we'd be like, oh, okay, but you don't have like that amount of time and, you know, maybe we would have been on, and he would be like, I'll go by the next meeting. He would have been like, I went by there and there and there and there and there, and you know, it's hard. So now we got a new full-time guy, we're gonna make him run all over town.
What's that guy's name?
Mike Moore.
Mike.
That's where we're.
A relation to Tim.
Can I make a motion to John?
No, no, we done talking?
That's all.
Okay, so can you ask the pool people to come to our meeting next time and give us an overview of what they've done with the plan and what they need money for? Okay, that'd be good. All right. Anything else? No, do I?
Let's go home.
Go ahead.
I make the motion at seven thirty-seven.
A second. Right.